Okay, good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. It is October 3rd, 2024. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
I, United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, almost the full house tonight with the planning commission. Mary Beth is online, okay.
Hello.
Welcome, Mary Beth.
Thanks, hi.
So, so Jim, you're still the ultimate. Everyone else is right with a number. Okay. Approval of the agendas first on the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, check it.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll move on to general public comment. And Mr. Cohen, are you here for the Hubbard subdivision?
So I'm here, I'm here to support the Hubbard subdivision request, so I'll wait for them to give their presentation and then I can weigh in.
Great, great, yeah, that should be, we'll get to that next, because we don't have any public comments, so we'll move to new business. And that is the Ted and Theo Hubbard subdivision hearing on Cold River Road. Anything new on your end?
No.
Okay, okay.
Not till we get a subdivision anyways.
Okay. You're not gonna get that Mylar done until you, until we say yes.
Yep, I checked with Bill.
Okay.
Bill right under the bus.
Okay, so we're in a public hearing now for the subdivision. Mr. Cohen, go ahead, unless you need some, some more background information from the Hubbard's?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to participate remotely in this. I just want to say that the Hubberts and Theo and his father are great neighbors. And I strongly support Theo's request for subdivision. I think it's a, it's a great thing for our property and, and they do a wonderful job of making sure that everything is taken care of. Theo is a great neighbor, he's engaged and is very respectful of the property. Both the Hubbard property and also the Buck property, which, which is the adjoining land, which I married to Barbara Buck, whose family has had this property for many generations, as well as the Hubbard. So, you know, the fact that there's a new generation coming into the Bald Mountain area, I think is awesome. And I think it should be approved without, without any reservations on our part.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill, thank you. Appreciate that very much.
Yeah, Jerry, this is their third, third time here. I don't know if you caught them the first time?
I did.
Yeah, and they came back with, with a survey three weeks ago, but we, we didn't, we missed noticing the public hearing. So that's, that's why we have the third time here. So we've gone through everything for our application process and, and prior approval process that we have. Any questions by the planning commission? Before we entertain a motion? Any comments from you, you guys? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Hubbard subdivision number 318.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Hubbard subdivision number 318, you said? Yes, that, that we approve it as is. Everything is, should be all set to go.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Yeah, and Mary Beth, that was an, an aye?
Aye, yeah, thanks.
Yep, unanimous. Okay, so, so now we get to the new Mylar.
Right. So, Mr. Chairman, so can I sign off if that's been approved and, you know, no, no longer would need me on this call?
Yes, anytime you want to.
Okay, thank you all so much and have a good evening.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Bye bye.
Bye.
So you have 90 days, so that is January 1st of 2025 to get the, the Mylar into Bill. And then we'll get it into our, our vault.
Those are just laminated copies of that. Oh, you're surveying your Mylar.
Okay, just one copy is all you need.
Just, okay, just, just one for our file, for the vault.
For the vault. 90 days, you might need it though.
Yeah, 90 days, January 1st, first of the year.
Good deadline to look at.
Yeah, easy to remember.
Yep, excellent.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Yep, I appreciate it.
We did it.
Yeah, no, no problem. We learned a little, I learned a little bit about public service here and it's a very admirable thing to do for the community. I spoke with Bill briefly about it and I can only imagine the chaos that could ensue in certain situations if there, if there wasn't perimeters to take for everybody. It was daunting at first, but now it's, it's, I, I understand it a little bit better and I appreciate all of your guys' time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good night.
All right, you too.
Bye bye, you too.
Okay, next, in the new business category. I'm sure you all read about the plans for the Diamond Run Mall. I, there is, there is a person in Vermont, the lawyer that'll be handling the permitting, that is willing to come speak to us. He couldn't make it this evening. So we can have him anytime he wants. We may want to wait till a little bit, he gets a little bit deeper in the permitting process. Or we could do it, or we could do it now. He thinks the permitting is going to take two years, he's quite certain of that. And then construction would be another, a third year on top of that before, before the, the mall reopens as a super center for Walmart. So, would, would you like to speak to this attorney sooner rather than later, or?
Be nice to have him have a presentation here, short one, just.
It would, it would be nice also to have the option of having him come back. I, I imagine that once this gets rolling, we will have more information than we have now and maybe have more questions to be answered.
Yeah, but, and over, yes, definitely, it, it has to go through the Act 250 process.
So, so we could just have him back a second time.
Yeah, there's some question whether it's going to be an amendment, but it'd be a really big amendment, so it remains to be seen whether they have to start.
Why is this such a big amendment? Because of the change of the footprint? Because it's still retail?
There's minor and major amendments to Act 250, so it probably would fall into major, if not require a new one. No one seems to know the answer to that quite yet.
And any changes to the Act 250 requirements, since that was approved also?
Right, right.
Add to the number of?
And, okay, the mall is like, was, is 30 years old, so everything has to be redone, like the stormwater permitting, the water and wastewater permitting. So in a sense, it is, it is starting from scratch and they're gonna take everything down that's up there, except the Spartan Arena and Kmart. And Bill, I forget why, I, I see you, Dana. I'm sorry? Yeah, why they wanted to hang on to that building? Or that part of the building?
My only guess is that it may be considering, maybe then considered a remodel and not a new construction if a part of the structure.
And the Kmart facility is pretty big compared to the rest of the mall. I mean, it represents at least, I'm gonna say 25, maybe 30% of that. Yeah.
But, but the, the new, the super center will be on the opposite side of the parking lot.
Yes, it will not be part of that structure, so.
No, it's, it's a.
I, I'm betting there's a, there, I, I, I know the reason, but it's probably just makes things easier for them.
And they're still, they're still talking about maybe a hotel, definitely more re, hopefully more.
Saying that he has, there's, there's, there are people that are interested, but until he could announce this anchor, no one else would probably sign on to it. So now that this is announced, that could open the door for other ones to say yes to, so.
Yeah.
My preference would be to wait until we have more concrete information, rather than have them come and do a presentation on speculation and what is, what is just an idea. I would rather have information readily available about Act 250 and what the implications are. And if that requires them a few more months, then we can see them in the spring. If they're gonna know what the Act 250 implications are, because to speculate about Act 250 and then to find out later on that we want them to come back and talk about Act 250, I, I don't know that is the best use of our time, but that's just my.
I don't know that we would get much more than what we got there, right?
Right, and then even the sketch plan wasn't, was pretty sketchy.
It was very, very conceptual.
Right, right, but I'm sure you've read, it's gonna, you know, be a full grocery store, there'll be a deli in there, there'll be a pharmacy and an auto shop as part of it.
Drive-through pharmacy, you know, similar to like Ticonderoga and Queensberry.
Okay, well, yeah, any Act 250 will draw us in too, as, as well as the select board. So, is that okay, Andy, to, to wait a few months, or, or are you?
Oh, I know. Whatever, and it's really not, I just thought a presentation, just actually to, to come up, what I would hope to hear at first is how, how they're gonna approach Act 250, but.
Well, we can do both.
No, but then if, if, if they don't have it formulated yet, there is no sense in, in, in having them come and just speculate on what's there. It would seem like to me it just doesn't require all that much difference in permitting from, from what was there. I mean, the grocery store is really the only change from, from the different retail that was there.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait till, into 2025. Any other questions?
Just, just in terms of, of what, what happened exactly at the select board meeting? Is there a next step defined for when the, the organization comes back to us, or is?
I don't think there was a date certain.
Not an event or a date?
No, and in fact, I, I think the developer kind of handed it over to the attorney to be the, the next, you know, you know, point of contact with the town as he proceeds through the permitting process. It was, I mean, that was the essence of it, but it was a long presentation. The developer is very loquacious, very, very, very verbal and told us a lot of other things, talked about a lot of things. But the, the, he did mention he had spoken to the mayor even before he spoke to the select board. Just apprised him what was going on and, and, you know, the city is, is going to, is, is thinks the three years it will have define a new tenant for the existing Walmart, it'd be plenty of time to find something else there. Any other questions?
I guess we didn't expect it, but it's great. Think that this is gonna happen, but it's perfect. You know, the city, they're gonna close the one down in the city and, and, so, so get to go, hopefully.
Mary Beth, anything?
I'm always picking. No, that's okay. That's interesting, but, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on then, since we've got some stuff to do tonight. Rutland Town School land disturbance permit, that was the, was that an amendment? I'm trying to remember what.
Three acre stormwater.
That's right, that's right. So, yeah, that's, this is the first step going to that. That, to get that permit and probably will mean a fairly expensive remedy, but there is, there is state money available for schools for this three acre stuff. So the three acre is, there's at least three hour, three hours, three acres of drainage there. And new law requires them to treat that. Whereas they, they might have, and I don't know what they have right now, but they probably have a much simpler system that's handling that. And the state permitting has upped the ante on, on that. And wants the stormwater treatment more stringent than it has been.
So it has to go through like a retention pond?
I, I don't know what they're gonna go through in there, and that's, every, everything's all different, so you gotta put everything, anything with more than three acres has to have a management plan.
Did they not change a residential too? Isn't there a residential one too?
This, this, this still, I think over three acres of impervious surface.
I thought there was something going on with, nothing residential yet.
No.
So it's due to the parking lot?
On the roof.
And the roof. Yeah.
There's two businesses that, the car wash had, was, was subject to that, the ground round was subject to that. So when they put the car wash in, they made sure there was enough impervious surface that, or enough, enough non-pervious surface that they fell under the threshold, so they purposely redesigned the whole thing to get around that. And Mark Foley up on Sword Road took up a whole bunch of the parking lot, planted grass to.
Right.
Perfect, so, yeah.
But that would be hard to do with the school, it really needs all that parking.
Needs more, sometimes.
Okay, we'll move down to old business. And so I, I went to the select board a couple of weeks ago with your motion about Act 181, which is the new Act 250 law. And they said, don't worry about zoning right now, essentially start it higher up on the list and see, see if there, if we're gonna meet the stuff that's, should be simpler to meet or, or could be simpler to meet than zoning. So the top of the list, and, and then they went right to this one item at the top, is the, the village center or planned growth centers? Whether that's, whether that's even feasible in Rutland Towns? And just look at that, you know? Will it work? And if it doesn't, then, you know, ballgame's over anyway, because that's one thing we can't meet on the list. So, you know, Rutland Town has always had an, an issue with especially a, a town center, a village center because of the shape of.
It's Rutland City. Our, our village center is Rutland City.
Right.
So maybe we should just merge with Rutland City and we can make a plan about how they're the center of, sorry, Bill, I just had to throw that out there.
On that one, why don't select board?
Yeah, I was tempted, but I said, maybe I'll leave that to Dana.
Thanks.
So, yeah, so I reached out to the state that guides this whole process of village centers or planned growth centers, and that's the, the brochure that I gave everyone.
This one.
Just kind of explains what they are. You know, the process of developing one and the benefits of having even just.
Designation.
Them, yeah, designation. It could mean extra grant money and, and things like that. So I reached out to them. The, the person who's been there forever, who's really good at this, is unfortunately leaving. But I am gonna have a meeting with him and his replacement next week just to fill them in on where Rutland Town is right now, and then we'll do a site visit. If, if the results of the meeting are like, oh, here, yeah, maybe there are some possibilities.
So are you talking about a site visit someplace else that's similar to ours, or are you talking about a site visit here?
Problem, well, it remains to be seen, but probably like if, we'll probably go right to where something might be feasible.
Here in the town.
In the town, right. Yeah, I don't know if you meant here, here, or?
No, no, what I meant was whether we were going to be taking a look at some other odd configuration of a town that has a village center designation to get ideas about what we, we might do, or whether we were trying to just pick arbitrarily certain spots around town that would serve as a.
I think, I'm quite certain that'd be part of their presentation, you know, at the site or, or prior if we want that. Here, here's how other towns have done this.
That would be great.
Once we decide there's any feasibility.
Off the top of, off the top of my head, the only place that I can think of that we would develop that type of designation is here, between here and West Rutland. And, you know, maybe we resurrect the Route 4 corridor plan with West Rutland and we partner with them to help us with that, I don't know, but.
Yeah, so there, I think any of these designations would apply to meeting the criteria in.
These five been around here, page, whatever it is for.
So, you know, that Business Route 4 potentially could be a planned growth center.
Yep.
I don't think we have any possibilities for a new town center, you know, it'd be the same issue, you know, where, where would it go? But we, we wouldn't qualify for downtowns either. And we'll have to ask them about neighborhood development areas.
Seems like the neighborhood development, 95% of the townspeople can't walk there. Like.
Right.
How could that really be a?
And I'm not even sure that was in the new Act 250 criteria, there was village centers and growth centers. So I think that's what we'll be concentrating on. So, you know, the grants that are available, once a, a town or city has a designation, you know, like if people need to put in ADA improvements or things like that, there's, there's a break. The state helps with that. So more later, I, I meet with them on Wednesday morning.
It's a crazy idea, we, we could partner with, with Mendon and Proctor and, and West Rutland and North Flaherty and the city and we could, we could create a, a, a network of electric vehicles that would transport people anywhere, from any one of the surrounding towns to our downtown newly designated growth center. And we could market that as, as a developmental hub and bring people in with no fossil fuels. Amatic tubes. Hey, I have to dream big, Bill. It's my only chance in, in a three-week period. It's here at Planning Commission. Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, so I can give you an update on the meeting next week if you'd like, if you'd like an email.
The meeting, the select one?
No, with the meeting with the state, the, the agency of the commu, Commerce and Community Development, that does the, the designations.
Just if there's. When's that happening?
Next Wednesday, yeah, there's something substantive comes out of it.
Is that during the day?
Yeah.
That'd be great to find out what they have said.
Okay.
Are they presenting to the regional planning commission? Is that what they're doing? No, is that something, something?
Nothing I know of.
Okay, I, I just didn't know where the, where that was being, that, where that presentation was coming. Next week, or is it a present?
It's, it's, it's a meeting.
It's a meeting, okay.
Yeah, the Zoom meeting. It's, it's half handing it off to the new person and the other half is like getting the experienced person's perspective. He knows, he knows Rutland Town a little bit.
Okay.
Getting his ideas before he leaves.
Got it, thanks.
Um, gonna skip down to announcements just for a second with the Pocket Park. Mary Ashcroft and the GMP real estate person and myself met about transferring that land, purchase of the land, lease of the land. He was going to get back to us with some numbers. And it sounds like something can happen fairly quickly. And so Mary then asked me to start looking into some grants that might help pay for the Pocket Park. And so there's, there's, there's a couple coming up this fall. And one's a recreational trails program funding to Vermont communities for the development, restoration and maintenance of public recreational trails. So we were thinking of some trails in there. So that grant round starts October 14th, not sure how long it stays open, we'll find out on the 14th how long. There's the Land and Water Conservation Fund that supports the development of public outdoor recreation opportunities across Vermont with a focus on creating parks and open spaces, enhancing recreation areas and facilities and protecting wilderness areas and forests. That's also open, opening up in October, October 21. And there, for both of these, there are some webinars the day after they open to explain the goals, the grant program, overview of the process and eligible activities to help inform project planning. So there's a couple of ones. Everybody in concurrence that we should just go for these?
Why not? Do you know what the mod is?
No. And sometimes it changes year to year, so you kind of have to wait for them to release them. Mary Beth, you have any familiarity with, with these two programs?
I don't. I'm familiar with the VoRec grant, but I don't think that covers the recreational grant, but I don't think that covers land purchase.
Right.
Was one of them Vermont Housing and Conservation Board, was that like the land and waters? One of the amendments? PHCB.
It's kind of the, the recreation component to it, so I don't think it's the same thing. Yeah, I'll have to look that up, where that even comes from, that money. They just say it's Land and Water Conservation Fund. So we also, Mary and I also talked about maybe doing a couple phases. So we also, Mary and I also talked about maybe doing a couple phases for the Pocket Park. Maybe doing the top part first. And that would, that would certainly be recreational, even up there. Picnic tables and maybe some trails. And access to the fishing area would be improved, but they don't want to improve too much. So no one, everyone to go there. And then getting, you know, clearing out the brush and woods at the top. Doing that and then maybe doing riverside stuff as phase two. Which might buy us some time to see just what the flooding hasn't, you know, what kind of flooding we're gonna be getting.
How you couldn't clear vegetation within a hundred feet of a river?
How do you do it?
Huh?
Compared waters.
Compared waters. That's not impaired? No?
No, no, I don't think it is. So that's the Pocket Mark. It's moving. And hopefully we'll get some news from the real estate part of GMP pretty soon. Yeah. We sat down with a survey that had been done and and looked, it's, it's weird. I don't know if we still have the map. You know, the town owns that strip that goes down the middle that used to be the old Route Four. And GMP owns on both sides and up along the railroad tracks it owns. So they, they wanna, they're, they're thinking they want to get you know, move the whole parcel over to the town somehow. Which would include more than what we actually had planned for, for the parcel park, but maybe there's some ideas for that area or maybe we just keep people away from the railroad tracks. So hopefully there'll be some good news on that pretty soon. Back up to old business, so anyone, does anyone have a chance to look at what Kevin?
Just the, what he, the extent of what he had done and the historical stuff was enough to shut me down. So I read all of that and could not begin to think about without setting aside an afternoon to do the reading through because basically what he said, or at least what I got, was that everything that we did, Bill, was a waste of time. So we should have just sent him all of the questions that we had come up with first. And asked him to rewrite the, the bylaws.
It would have been easier, I think, to do that than to do what he did. I mean, the way he compared the, the possibilities of zone versus non.
Right. And well, the other thing that was of interest to me was the fact that the majority of towns have both zoning and bylaws. I thought that that was, you know, so there's got to be some wisdom in why most municipalities would choose to do both.
So how does that apply to what we're doing?
I, I found it interesting because we've had conversations about do we need to adopt bylaws, excuse me, do we need to adopt zoning? What do we do with bylaws? And the interesting thing for me, from a factual standpoint and a functional standpoint was that he made a comment that most do both. And they include those in the new, one of the new regulations. I can't remember. I could probably pull it up. It's called a what is it? It's a unified set of regulations where bylaws and zoning are combined to take care of all development that is administered through planning commissions. I, I was reading this when we were going through all of those references, Bill, and I'm thinking how does this apply to what we're doing? And the answer was, it doesn't. And, you know, we had bylaws that were so out of date and I just didn't know what we didn't know. So anyway.
Changes really don't start.
Well, he went through, he did the same thing that we did, Bill. He went through and identified section by section or subsection by subsection. So I guess to, to some extent, it was good that we did what we did because he could just cut and paste and maybe save himself some time. I don't know, but. Anyway.
Because it's, it's not until page, I mean, the first three pages, three and a half pages are about why we need to have a subdivision regulation and the statutory authority.
Yeah.
And that stuff that doesn't necessarily need to be in our bylaws.
Oh, he was given commentary.
Right.
Just, I thought that was backup.
Right.
Right. For the recommendations that he was making, yeah.
And on page four is when he starts.
When you're talking about page four, what?
The land, land rock, sparing wool.
Yeah.
This one.
September eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Do you have the rest of it?
I have the whole thing. It was like twenty-two pages.
Starts right there. Mine didn't have, yeah, never mind.
So page four.
Page four is this one.
Page four, he starts in, okay, section one.
One point oh one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that.
And, and these are the actual changes that.
Well, these are the potential changes.
Right.
I mean, there's, there's a choice.
I would simply say the town of Rutland hereby adopts the following subdivision. Okay.
Right. And he's going by the existing subdivision ordinance, right.
He's going by what we turned over.
No, actually. No, he, he's referencing the, the statutory provision that is actually in effect.
Section one point oh one. So like our current ones are like yeah, so when we, when we redid the draft, we, we, I, I did it as a section to make them easier to to put on a table of contents. So he actually made the comments to our draft.
Right.
His changes. His, his suggestions are what we should do to change the draft we sent to him.
Right.
Okay.
I got that much.
Yeah.
Which essentially starts with one point oh one.
Very, very. One, one, one oh one, yeah, that's.
And everything that he's identified is an area, is a section that he would change. One point oh one, one point oh five, one point oh six, one point oh eight, one point oh nine, one, twelve definitions.
So is it gonna be that hard?
Well. What I, what I thought, what I got out of this, I don't know if it was explicit, was that if we weren't an area that, if we weren't able to use the, the new laws that were focused on zone, on municipalities that are zoned, that, that in order to to get the advantage that those things have, we, it would take a lot of work to go back to the, the non-zone laws that were there to put them together to accomplish to accomplish what the zone.
And my takeaway was very similar to yours, Sherman, and that we, we would become a one acre parcel and everything would be covered under Act two fifty. Is that correct?
I didn't exactly, I, I remember, remember it's being there, but I didn't, I couldn't comprehend what.
Well, that if we were not doing a combined, if we weren't using zoning or we weren't using the unified approach to zoning and bylaws, then we would fall under, in the small minority of towns in Vermont would fall under that provision and that would be, everything beyond that would be subject to Act two fifty.
Which it is now.
That's what we are now.
I, I, I understand that, but that's, that's what he was saying, that the authority that we have gets, is any local designation or any local authority, as I read it, would be handed over to the state and we would then be restricted on what our area of focus and legitimacy in regulation would be, because everything has to come from the state and statutory provisions. And so if we did not take that, that unified approach or zoning approach, that we would be reducing our leverage considerably. But that was just the takeaway that I got in the, in the analysis that I read from.
So how important is that leverage? I mean, we basically use the subdivision ordinance now just to address permit applications. Right? And that's about it.
There, there's a, there's a large comment where he, he tries to identify the difference between using one versus the other.
Yep.
And if you're not, if you don't use zoning, I don't know if I can get it all together, and you have to put, you have to use the other tools that are available to us.
Right.
Then we will not be able to get as much control as we would get if we, if we use zoning.
Right.
And his example was that if you're, if you're zoning, you can not only identify where something's constructed, what, what it's used for.
Yes.
And the limits on that, on that use.
Right.
Whereas if you don't use the zoning.
Authority.
Yeah.
Basically.
You, you would, you could only control where, where they're, where they're building and nothing else.
Right, right.
Not its use, not any, any constraints on.
But still, that's where we're at now.
Well, he must, yeah, but it, it sounds like, it's, it sounds like he was just trying to let us know how much work there's gonna be to, to get what we want out of the, the non-zoning.
Yeah, let me see if I can get that, yeah.
And does that mean that some of the language we put in our draft?
Oh, it means, it means they're gonna be different. We reference different things, things that don't exist now in our draft.
Right.
So we would have to go back and not, there's nothing necessarily that, that entirely replaces that. But there's something that may include that. Or maybe would take a look, looking at more than one thing to get what we want out of it. So, so I, that's what I got of it. And I didn't, I didn't go, I did not go beyond page four.
You talked about Dylan's rule, which I had a little bit of difficulty trying to understand except that he says that there is no charter for Rutland Town and therefore town's regulatory, regulatory authority must come from statute and that is on page two.
That, that would be the case for the city, which does have a charter as well.
Correct.
You cannot do anything more than, than the state allows you to do in statute.
We must always locate and refer to express legislative authority when evaluating proposed municipal regulations. There exists no charter for Rutland Town, therefore the town's regulatory authority must come from statute.
He's got a lot of extra stuff in here.
Yeah. I, I thought that he was indicating that chartered municipalities have different recognized status with respect to the state and what they can do. But I, I may be wrong. That's why Regent's is a city, but I, I have not explored the differences between the status of a city versus, which is, which is chartered and a, a non-chartered municipality.
The bottom line remains that we're not chartered, chartered, so we're even more constrained by what the state says.
Correct.
So I mean, it's kind of like a false argument.
What do you mean?
Him even bringing up charter dumb. You know, it's like, we're not going there. We're not there. I don't think.
No, I, I thought he was just making a comparison, that if you have a, if you have a charter, then you have different statutory authority than if you don't. I, I, that's the only thing that I, I got out of that. I didn't think that he was telling us that we should try to do that. I think he was just making it by way of comparison as some lawyers like to do.
So, I mean, there is a question, I mean, if, if we are going to pursue Act one eighty-one, the new Act two fifty, we would need to roll in zoning with the subdivisions, subdivision ordinance.
I, I would want.
Probably don't want to wait to figure, you know, have that figured out in this town because our, our current, our current subdivision ordinance is forty years old.
Well, I was a big objector to looking at the Act one eighty-one as a priority until I found out that basically what Kevin reviewed for us was we had a useless document. Which now, you know, I gotta say that I don't remember how many hours we put in. But I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, I, I don't know whether it's ashamed or annoyed that all of that work was done to be told that we were out of compliance from the beginning and he probably should have written our bylaws. But anyway.
Right, that's.
But in that light, then perhaps, because we really don't have bylaws that we can actually use, then perhaps that shifts at least my thinking back to, well, maybe we should look at you know, what a what, what is available for low hanging fruit and, and do something in terms of comparing what Kevin is telling us and how that fits into the one eighty-one. I mean, that's the only thing I can think of.
The one advantage we have now is that he used, he used what, what you, you did.
Yeah.
In the same format and in line by line to tell us what had to be done, not necessarily easy, but here's what has to be, has to be done for this. So that, that makes it a little better. Just in terms of organizing.
And for, for my approach, I would have to go back just to familiarize myself with what we had done and, and what is useless and then, you know, make a recommendation about what he's saying. I mean, in order to be able to interpret what he has to say, I can't, I can't really make an informed decision unless I'm comparing it originally working with, but that's just me. Others may be able to.
In the end, we'll go with what he suggests.
I'm, I'm sure, but if we're trying to explain why we're making the changes and if we're gonna be expected to make a presentation to the public, I'd really like to know what those ramifications are.
Yeah.
So I can take his recommendation. I mean, we can, we can, I don't like going through these, but ultimately, it's, it's basically, he just wrote do this in this section, this in this section and just go through it, do it. So that's gonna take some time, but I could do that. And I probably could have it done for the next meeting.
If not, that's okay.
Yeah. So you know, I can, I can let you know when, when I'm done with them and I can give you a before and after and look at them or we just, I just give you a copy of what he wrote and be like, okay, I mean, ultimately what we have now basically is irrelevant. So even doing a comparison, it's almost irrelevant. Like, it's just.
Right. And, and, and the only one available on the website to people
Is the old one.
Is the draft, is not even the old one, right?
Oh, there. Oh, no, the current ones are there.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Current, you know, what, what we have
Forty years old, yeah.
In, in the, the original version is there.
Right.
I only saw this.
No, it's, it's there.
No, okay. Okay, well, that's good.
It might be side by side, but it's, it's there, yeah.
Well, yeah, that's, that's good in the sense that both.
No, the old ones are there. The Article one, one eighty-five dash one, now it's, it's there.
Yeah.
So didn't somebody say, wasn't there a conversation about if you're gonna go to all that work again, is he gonna slice and dice it to the point that he should do it anyway?
That was my comment.
Yeah, I guess it was yours. I, I guess it was. I mean, I'm not saying, it just seems like a lot of work for you if he's gonna chop it all up again.
So if you like, what I could do is I could, I can put into the best of my ability all of his updates and then send it to him, but his hourly rate
Yeah.
versus mine is.
That's true.
The work is. There's a gap.
Yeah, even though it, it took him forever to get to this.
Right.
I'm sure it took a lot of time.
Nine months from the time we got it back, so.
So, so we've got, so we've got two documents on the website right now for people to look at for sub, for guidance on subdivisions and neither one of them are legally sound.
So this shouldn't be done.
That's why I have revised, I mean, I, I thought that based on our conversation. I mean, I, I thought that based on our conversation last month, well, last month, well, it was last month, but three weeks ago, was that we got the feedback from Kevin and we should focus on getting the, the updated bylaws in, in form, rather than focusing on 181. Now, I, I, I believe that the two are somewhat linked. And we have to focus on the bylaws because what we have could be challenged in court and wouldn't, wouldn't go anywhere.
Right.
So we have no leg to stand on. So that is the priority. If you want to look at that in light of 181, which, what did you say? The Select Board was asking us to do, Barbara, with respect to that.
Respect the 181, take the top thing on the list that would be required, and that's the village centers or.
Village centers, right. And which is related to our town plan and thereby the bylaws for subdivisions, at least loosely.
Very loosely, yeah.
Right. But if, if he's suggesting that we move in a different direction, or that we enhance our language around the bylaws, then that might be a recommendation, a consolidated recommendation to the Select Board about what, what the implications of 181 are for us as a town.
You're not talking about getting into the zoning, doing the unified bylaws, are you? Because the Select Board's not ready to ta, to take that on right now.
You, you know, I, I don't know that the Select Board charges us to come up with a recommendation based on what they are or aren't ready to do. I think they make a recommendation to us to do an evaluation. And then we can come up with tiered approaches for what is needed. And the first approach would be have bylaws that will pass muster based on our attorney's recommendation. Whether that's the end of the, the process, or whether that's just one step in the process, that, that's up to the Select Board to decide. But, you know, if, if Kevin's coming back and telling us that most of them have either side by side adopted zoning and, and subdivision bylaws, or unified ones, then, then that's something we should think about. It doesn't have to be a unified approach. But he seemed to imply that they were either one of two types. Side by side, bylaws with zoning, or unified, according to statute, applicable governance with both the zoning and the bylaws incorporated into the same document. At least that's what I was.
Right, but neither one of those, I mean, there is another option. Just, and we have, I don't know where it is in statute, but we have the ability to have just a subdivision ordinance.
Absolutely. And you don't even have to have subdivision ordinances. And he made some reference to the fact that there are very few towns that have nothing, but they can. I mean, you have a town of 200 people, maybe you don't want to spend the time doing something like that. But we're a fairly, a, a larger municipality. I'd be curious to find out, you know, if we fall as the 20th biggest town in Vermont, and I don't know that for a fact, I haven't checked recently.
No way.
I was surprised at how high we are in terms of population compared to other towns. So I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not saying that we're 20th. But my point is that if we are one of the larger ones, I would be curious to find out how many other towns of our size do not have one of the, one of the alternatives that he has recommended. In terms of whether it's a side by side zoning set of regulations versus bylaws, subdivision bylaws, or an integrated unified set of ordinances. I'm just, I'm just curious about that because there is some logic to why other towns have done that. And if that is the case, perhaps we could use a couple of those as examples to in, inform our recommendation to the Select Board. That's all I'm saying.
What is the town that we reference quite a bit that does not have zoning? We, there's, there's, what's the town that we, I know we've, we've brought it, we've brought it up numerous times. Such and such doesn't have.
There's, there's, there's about 10 in Rutland County that don't.
There's one relatively, maybe it's in Rutland County. It seems like we reference sometimes, but I don't remember what it was. It wasn't as, it wasn't as populated as Rutland Town. You don't know which, you don't know the one I mean.
Trying to think, you know, a, a town with a similar population as ours?
No, just a town, a town that we use, it's a similar, regionally similar here that does not have zoning. There's one that we've referenced before. I can't remember what it.
Danby doesn't. Not sure, Middletown Springs.
Middletown Springs, I was going to say, I thought.
Certain, Middletown Springs.
Has zoning.
Does it?
Wells, maybe. Benson. Smaller towns.
Yeah.
But to give you some perspective on the size of Rutland Town, I mean, statewide, it's not very big. We're the same size as like Brandon, population wise. We both have, Brandon may actually have more people. It may actually have 4,000 plus, and we're under 4,000 now. We're doing the 2020 census. So to avoid complicating this too much, I think we can direct Bill to plug in, you know, starting at page four. And to avoid going back to the Select Board and saying, well, you sure you didn't want, you know, to do side by side regulations or unified, they don't want to hear that right now. They, they, they want a lot more background from us. And, and that would include using the benefits of 181 and all of that kind of stuff. But we've got to work our way down that list. Feeling zoning off for now. And then, you know, we can digest these first three and a half pages, what, what exactly, and, and maybe that could be part of our report to the Select Board. But I think we need a legal document. And hopefully Bill can do it without a whole lot of work and, and hopefully even get Kevin to sign off on it in less than nine months.
We're, we are, we are currently 40th. Brandon's 39th. So you're right.
40th in the state?
Yep. Out of 251. So we are in the top 20% of towns.
I don't know how we could find it. I couldn't. I was looking the same thing you were, but my, my, I don't have good enough wifi here to get it.
For what? For towns?
Towns. I was going to do it by rank, but I Googled rank by population.
Yeah.
But it hasn't come up. But are we the biggest town without zoning?
That was my question. I was trying to figure out.
I don't know how we could figure.
I don't know how to figure it out.
Probably not, but there probably aren't many. That's kind of a non-answer, but.
I read somewhere that there's a number of towns that don't have it. But when you take the population of the state.
Right.
There's very few, there's only a small segment of our population that, that lives in a town that doesn't have zoning. In other words, because it's all the smallest of the towns that don't have it.
Wouldn't it, so if, if we knew what the 10 were, and we looked it up on that list, and we found one close, is there any benefit to, I mean, would there be benefit to knowing what their, or is there not really? And why, you know, why does it matter? I guess we just write it, right? Just move forward.
It's not going to matter to the.
It's not going to matter, and we just do it and.
Right.
Try to get Kevin to.
It's, yeah.
It would be nice.
Do what's best for the Rutland Town residents.
Right. I'm, I'm only saying that there's some wisdom in what he is presenting. That's all. And we have been through a variety of exercises where, oop, we can't do that. We don't have zoning. Or, oop, we can't do that. We have to create an ordinance. Or, oop, we have to do this because we don't have regulatory authority. That's all I'm thinking about.
Yeah, it was a bigger picture.
There is a bigger picture, yeah.
There's a much, a much bigger picture.
It would be nice if one of these real small towns that doesn't have zoning just redid their bylaws. So we could get a, get a draft from them. That's going to stand muster because it seems like, I, I realize you guys put a load of work into this, but the fact that it has to go through a lawyer for review, I almost think, why not just have him draw it up?
Right.
Regardless of the cost.
The other way, the way, the other way of kind of looking at this is that the work we did got us to the point where this is all we have to change now. That's, Kevin gave us the only, the things we only have to change now versus the things we already have taken out. So we took out.
A whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
We cut out at least 20 to 30% of that document.
Big chunk. So we have, all we have left to do are these changes, so.
Thanks for looking on the bright side.
So Bill, in looking at it, I, I, I got the impression that there wasn't going to be a one to one replacement.
No.
But there's going to be a selection of.
Guidance.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's going to be a.
It's not, yeah.
It's not a cut and paste. It wasn't that nice.
The, the other thing that I think is a real benefit is that we flagged at least a dozen, if not more, references that, that we could not find.
And he said, take them out, like he's like.
Take them out, right. And here's the, oh, here is the, the real reference. And, and now he made a recommendation about how we can reference statutory authority for our bylaws. So, I mean, there, there are some good things. It's just personally, I was a little deflated with how, how much of the work was just dismissed, so.
Well, it's, it's really complicated. We had a really old document.
Right.
With lots of things that have changed.
Right.
So we had to, we needed some help just winnowing that stuff out.
And it was good work, like Bill said. It was, it was worth it because now we, we have a better understanding of
and it's already.
What we need to focus on.
Already done all the formatting. There's a lot, there's a lot to do anyway, so it's, it doesn't matter.
Right.
Thank you, Bill. And yeah, and I, I guess we'll have to run it by Kevin again, but.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Hopefully give him a deadline that sticks.
Good luck with that. Barbara, can I just, these first three and a half pages of Kevin's document, is there some way we can get the Select Board to understand this and know what it is? Not to change anything, but so they know going forward, here are the implications of what we're doing. Because, I mean, it's, it's good for us to know this, but, but we're not the ones making the ultimate decision.
Yeah.
So it, it would be nice if the attorney could present this to them in some manner that they could understand and appreciate it.
That, that was, you know, that's a really good idea because him telling us what the rest of the state is doing, telling us, telling the Select Board, and then they can give us the task of doing the grunt work to, to make it happen. It, it is fine, but I think they have to have a fundamental understanding that only we have based on the work we've done and what Kevin is telling us. So.
Yeah.
That may not be a bad idea.
I can, I can approach Kevin about that, about, yeah. Whether he wants to send us something writing or if he's willing to talk to him about it.
Probably a letter would be.
It's his preference.
Letter to the Select Board.
Yes.
Good idea.
Thanks, Ellen.
Okay. Do towns that are getting in the zoning and have a predominant, predominantly large portion of their town that are covered under Act 250, how are they governed by the Development Review Board concept?
Yeah, if they have zoning, they have to have some.
That law was changed here a couple of years ago, wasn't it? The DRB versus zoning board of adjustment.
I, it could be either, as I understand it. It's, you just need to set up a system, a fair system where, where applications are reviewed and there could be an appeal process and all that kind of stuff. And towns do it differently. So I think that might have been the change.
Now, what becomes of properties, something that the town takes on zoning? What becomes of the properties that are controlled by Act 250? Do they stay with Act 250?
What becomes of towns?
So, so the same thing, so the same thing would be like for the, for the space up at the mall. Well, well, that's maybe too big. But if there's something that's under 10 acres.
Right.
And it's Act 250, you would think that if the town adopted zoning, that the amendment wouldn't go through Act 250 again, would it? I think that's what Jim is asking, right? It would be, would we, would, would the zoning board of adjustment or the, or the Development Review Board take that?
That, that's my understanding, that they would then, they would then review that, taking it out of the hands of the state and leaving it to the municipality. And that would give, that would place the authority in.
No, if that property should get just for the sake of discussion here, get sold somewhere down the line and have a different use proposed for it, then I expect it probably would lose the Act 250 status if we were on there zoning.
Doesn't lose it altogether. And I'm trying to think of Act 181. I think it only applies to new housing or.
So it'd be grandfathered.
Adopted, just housing in general. So, so any benefits you get from not having to do Act 2, Act 250 would only apply to housing. And I'm not sure if you're speaking to housing or something else. So, so any new housing development, any refurbished housing, a house becomes apartments or something, that would, that could fall under this new Act 181. And depending on what tier you end up on, how many of the criteria you can meet, determines if you get a free ride with Act 250, or if you still have to meet some of the stipulations of Act 250.
And it seems to me, and I have to read more on this, Barbara, but it seems to me that it, it's the state's way of returning some local control to municipalities as long as they can check off a review process of that is, is sound and cohesive. I don't know if that's in fact the case.
Yeah, it, it is. But the, the focus really is on more housing and, and areas that protect habitat, wildlife habitat, aquatic habitat, that's all part of this too. So as you move down the tiers, there's, there's criteria for those types of things. Like what are you doing to protect, you know, that wildlife corridor with this, this development?
Right.
So that was trying to figure out how to say this, in, in amending Act 250, they kept, they kept things kind of sacred. The housing and natural resources and like river corridors and that sort of things. The town would still have to do that stuff to get the benefits of less Act 250 permitting.
Right. But it, it's still, the, the point is, correct me if I'm wrong, that the benefits of not having to go through Act 250 permitting means that the oversight is being regulated at the municipality level.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
In a general sense, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any language in Act 181 about development review boards.
No, I'm just saying that, but if, if, if Act 250 is going to give an exemption because of the phases of the criteria that we can meet at the town level, then that's basically allowing us to operate then that's basically allowing us to operate more autonomously as long as we're respecting certain guidelines or principles that
Yeah.
they are promoting or.
This, yeah, um, generally, generally, um, but there's also, they get, they gave more powers to regional planning commissions to have a regional overview of, of what happens with, with, with towns getting this, you know, additional autonomy. So there is a check still in place, just in a different place.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know how, how widespread it is, but, but, uh, this, this document that we were we re- reviewed.
What's the title on that one?
Flood hazard and river.
Oh, yeah, from last time, yeah.
Um, requires, uh, Development Review Board.
Right.
So maybe the plan was made to do it at that level rather than rather than say everyone needs one. You're going to say, if you, if you want this, you need a Development Review Board. And, and just do it at the bylaw level.
The, the one thing that is encouraging, and it's not even related to our conversation now, but it's related to something that, uh, Theo, uh, said, that he came and felt that he was educated and he appreciated the, uh, the service that we offer and, uh, the process, uh, going through to understand what, uh, is involved. And um, I, I think that as an educator, the, the more that we can serve as an educational branch of the Select Board, the more we can, we can promote buy-in from, uh, town residents to, to work for a common, uh, a common purpose. I don't know. He, no one solicited his comment, and yet, uh, he probably was frustrated at the outset, but he complimented us even though they came three times for, uh, for, uh, you know, a subdivision, a, a minor one. So for, for me, that acknowledgement is, is gratifying. That's all I'm saying.
You know what's blown me away about, I don't know how many years I've been doing this, fifteen maybe? Is how the couple of times that zoning's been brought up is how how much, all, all of a sudden, we're sitting here and we're talking about this and, and it's, and it's I think, I, I think that there's some, some certain things it would be good about, obviously, be good about. But how people just come out of the woodwork, it's the most amazing thing. And when you get an opportunity to see that, it's going to blow your mind.
Yeah, I know.
It, it, it's just amazing. I've never seen for a town that seems like there might be some logic in doing it if we all thought about it. I'm not saying that I'm, I'm necessarily proponent of just doing it, but i- i- you would be amazed at the opposition that comes out of the woodwork. I just, I don't quite understand it because a lot of times it's people that they don't have the, they don't have the, um, uh, ability to sit in on these kinds of things and understand it. And I understand, I, I understand it partially. And but it's, it's amazing. And, and you may get that opportunity by the sounds over the next whatever many years, but it's.
But Jerry, do you remember that it was Tom Turner that sent out that questionnaire, right?
Yeah.
This is back around twenty eleven, give or take. And polled the townspeople. And over seventy percent of the people came back and said that they were in favor of some limited zoning at that time. And yet, the opposition comes out and, and would make you think that it's exactly the opposite of that, that seventy percent of the people are. So it would be interesting, certainly, again, to send out a real questionnaire and find out where the townspeople do. I, I think that's perhaps something that we should look at doing.
A lot of questions come up about, that, that becomes another town employee, correct? Am I think? Is it there's, I, I think depending on what system we go with, it becomes, i- it just, it just starts to get really complicated really fast and the opposition just.
And it doesn't have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's amazing how, how much opposition just, it was like, wow, all of a sudden this room was full of people pissed off. It's crazy.
You know, I, I think, I think Jerry, you're absolutely right, but oftentimes that people are reacting. It's a knee-jerk reaction.
I agree, yeah.
And if we could come up, that's why I take the education approach, if we could come up with a, a list of pros and cons and how it impacts their life and our work, then you could, you could say, this is what it means. It's not curtailing you. It's just making the process simpler.
I'm afraid you might not be as, feel as gratified as you did with Theo. I don't know, but we'll see. Maybe they will see where that goes.
I'm sure not, Jerry. I mean, I've had some pretty ungratifying.
Unfortunately, the first thing that's going to come up is that people feel there's going to be more regulation rather than less. And that's really a tough education process, but uh, to your point, maybe that's where we should be going.
You know, maybe.
The education, you mean?
The education part was really, I think people that want to subdivide land or do different things with their land would, would be better served by a local board than they are by an Act two fifty board.
Uh, that size.
And certainly, certainly be more cost-effective for the applicant.
I mean, that's a key thing. Think how many projects have just got scrapped because they got so cumbersome to deal with Act two fifty. Which once the town developed to the point that there's nothing left, but anyway.
That's a good point, Jerry. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
What happened the last time I was on Select Board? We asked the Planning Commission for preferably a ten-page zoning ordinance. And if it had to go to twenty pages, well, that would be the maximum. And we ended up getting a package that was about that thick. And we went through it page by page by page and eliminated some pages altogether. And a couple of cases, we added stuff in. And we ran out of time.
I think that's what happened with that last.
Ran out of time because we couldn't meet the deadline. And I, I told Stan, I said, Stan Rhodes is the chairman. That time I said, I'm not going to support something that's half-done. And that's where it sets. And I still got that. I found it the other day in some of my papers, that, uh, thing that's that thick.
And you know, to your point, uh, Jim, i- if, if we were going to do this, I'm a firm believer in laying the groundwork first. So that we would compare, uh, zoning ordinances of towns our size to see how manageable they are and look at what we might want to adopt and then just pick that, then submit that to Kevin to see where that would go. So that you don't have to operate under, uh, an artificial timeline that gets imposed on us with three months and we haven't started, started the work.
When you start the process by officially, uh, getting the Planning Commission to draft an ordinance.
Yeah.
That's when the clock starts. The day they turn it back to the Select Board starts another clock.
Right.
And we just did not have time enough. We got through probably two-thirds of it.
And that's why the, the, the bulk of, I mean, what we've done with other ordinances is before we even s- submit a draft to the board, the Select Board, we've spent months putting them together, whether it's sidewalks or these bylaws or, or something else. We've spent months developing those ordinance, river corridors, whatever we've been working on. We spend months working on the side and doing work groups before the Select Board even gets a chance to look at it, which then means that we've done better work uh, laying that, uh, foundation so that when the clock does stick, start ticking, we might be able to react appropriately because we've done a lot of legwork examining the, uh, the, the content, but that's just.
Yeah, speaking of river corridors, that could be part of our education effort, outreach effort.
Yeah.
Because the, pretty much a similar apparatus for reviewing projects, or development projects in the sense of river corridors, um, is in place in that. So if we get that out, talk about it, then maybe it can alleviate some concerns about zoning or maybe it just blows the issue up even before we get them zoned. Hard to tell.
Yep.
But there are a lot of similarities.
We have.
But it's not town-wide. That's the big difference. River corridors and not town-wide.
Rutland Town has got a huge cross-section of business, industry, manufacturing and residential properties. And I can think of one that, uh, is huge and huge in the country that operates here. And I I would personally like to see it governed by the way it is now because things are pretty smooth. Pretty smooth.
Mm-hmm. We're raising a lot of money.
It's, uh, these are the kinds of things you're going to have to think about and and, uh, make a decision on at some point.
Yeah, there, there are bad actors out there um, who take advantage of us not having zoning, but they're, they're few and far between. It is a well-oiled machine.
Good thing about it is one, if, if you get into a uh, situation where there's, um, non-agreement with the property owners and it goes to a head, then it's on the state's ticket. Not the town.
In the sense that the state rules on it and takes over the case.
When I say state, it's the Act two fifty. So it might not be a bad thing to keep some of, some of the selected ones in that corner.
Well, there can be very short zoning ordinances. There can be. But, but there can be ten, ten pages or less. It really can.
Well, that may be a future, um, project for e- educating the Planning Commission about the, uh, options for doing that and, and how simplistic. But to Jim's point, you want to keep it as simple as, as possible, retaining as much, uh, authority and confidence imparted by the state to the municipality. Um, and you, you don't want it to be overly complex, otherwise it becomes unwieldy.
And even though we're not supposed to be, you know, thinking about this or talking about this, it's like, just, it's like we said, just put zoning aside for now and go through the rest of the list. Even though that's what's been asked of us, it, it's always there and it'll, it'll always be on the list and it can be done simply. It doesn't have to be a big deal.
And I think that that's part of the educational piece. And, and, you know, we can put it on the back burner. We could have it on the side and not be the main focus. But if there are references here and there, then we might as well ask for, uh, the expertise and the, um, e- education as well as the information to help us make a, an informed decision about what the benefits would be. But once again, that could be a, um, uh, an extended process. But as I said in the very beginning that launched this whole conversation, I have come full circle to believe that, uh, our work with bylaws need to be at least uh, a parallel of conversation around the Act one eighty-one.
And are we doing that, do you think? Or?
Well, we, we have, we have the chat, we have the charge from the Select Board now to look at town centers or to, to look at these designations. And I, I, I think that we can look at that with an eye towards what our bylaws say in what's under it. And whether there's anything that we can gain from that. So. You know, uh, because they have to all be rewritten.
But thi- this is not statutory. I mean, there are some statutory links to give ACCD permission to have this program and have grants, but it's not a set of rules for municipalities.
No, no, no. And I'm not looking at it from a set of rules. I'm looking at it from a holistic perspective and what we do as, as a, um, as a commission in terms of, um, you know, our land map and our, uh, you know, development, um, priorities. And I think that that can tie into this, but it's also uh, related to our work with, you know, Theo and and Ted and others who want to, uh, bring, uh, subdivisions before us. So I, I see them as not necessarily concentric, but overlapping, if you're looking at a Venn diagram, but they are, the, the circles intersect. That, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. Ready to move on?
Please.
Uh, we just have one more thing tonight, the minutes from September twelfth.
Move, to approve the minutes from September twelfth.
We have.
Yeah.
We've got enough people here to.
Second.
Thanks, Andy.
Any discussion, any corrections?
Yeah, I was, um, not present at the August twenty-second and I believe I abstained and that was omitted from the, uh, approval of the minutes from August twenty-second. I would not have voted.
So Sherman, you abstained?
I, I made the motion because there's nothing precluding me from making a motion.
Right.
Uh, but it says Mr. Hunter and Mr. Cohen abstained, but I know that, uh, the biking trio was all absent for that, for that, um, for that meeting, so.
You got that, Phil?
I got it.
Okay.
I'm racing to find some punctuation issues.
Just close your eyes and speak.
Put them down.
We'll give you plenty of time here.
No, I'm good. I'm good. I, I think I'm all set.
You just want to take up Norman's role.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Jerry.
Okay, all those in favor of the minutes of September twelfth?
So that, that is what, as amended, yep.
And everyone's okay, the makers of the motion?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
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 Thereabouts, you there?
Dylan said aye.
Any nays or any abstentions?
Actually, I need to abstain. Actually, I was not here.
The ayes have it. If there are motion to adjourn.
A move? Go ahead.
Second.
Or adjourn.